To the website, I see the lawyers came on. She had asked this to her.
Oh, and I haven't talked, I didn't talk to her about it today.
Last week or something she'd asked.
Yeah.
I don't think they can.
Paul, can you hear us?
So. Yeah. If you are.
I know.
Ready?
They can't hear.
I can hear, I can see you guys talking, but I can't hear you.
Yeah.
How about now?
I just turned on my. Does that help?
I think it's probably the same thing that was happening. Probably something we gave last week.
What'd you do?
No, I was on rest, rest was on. Someone asked, well, we're leaving.
We just go.
We're going through. They can hear us.
I don't know. I had a chance to see the thing.
He pointed me there.
They can hear us, right? Perfect. I got you, Paul. Thank you. That's perfect. Well, Mayor, I'd say, go ahead, they can hear us, they can use the chat feature for now, while I play around.
Okay, sounds good. Um, it is six foot two, so I'll push the call. Six twenty, meeting of length, Auburn City Council order. And are any agenda changes, additions, et cetera?
Your mic on, Mayor? Everybody got your mics on or not?
Mine's on.
Are we ready to approve the agenda?
What changes? I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Who's Craig? Um, motion on the table to approve the agenda presented on the table, motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication section of the meeting, anybody here to address the council about any particular item? Hearing no one from the public, we'll, I think, move on to the consent, consent agenda. Got three items, city council minutes, cigarette permit, liquor license. Does anybody have any questions about that, or are we ready to move on to consent agenda?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Craig and Stephanie, all.
Actually, just one quick question I'm, I'm curious asking. This liquor license for, oh, that's her, she has.
Yep.
Okay, never mind, just figured it out, okay.
Any other questions, you want to answer yourself?
There was some.
How much we've ever spent to push time consent agenda? Um, spoke with the motion and second for approval, consent agenda, all favor motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No public hearings or disapproval, so we get to a couple resolutions. Chris, you want to introduce those two?
Uh, so Resolution six dash twenty dash twenty twenty-two A. Um, is the resolution approving the agreement between the city of Mount Vernon and Lynn County for the ARCA funding, their American Rescue Plan Act funds. That's a million dollars for the sewer projects that we will be taking on. Uh, fairly standard sub recipient agreement between the two. Just making sure that we do the reports that are required by ARCA is the big thing, and then how we're going to disperse the funds, so.
Is there gonna be a second round of county?
Yes.
There is.
Are we in the line for that?
Um, I believe the projects that we had listed previously, um, have been recently submitted, but I don't know if we even added any additional.
It came out pretty good.
Yeah.
Motion just be happy with that.
I will move to approve Resolution six dash twenty dash twenty twenty-two A, approving the city of Mount Vernon, American Rescue Plan, Subrecipient Board of Lynn County.
Thank you, Steph.
I'm happy to second that, this is great.
Great. Hopefully you guys can hear, it's move and seconded to approve that Resolution six twenty twenty-two twenty-eight. Uh, this is a roll call vote, is there any other question about it? Otherwise, if you're ready, call the vote.
Rose?
Yes.
Ingo?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
You did a thumbs up, thank you.
Turner?
Hope you do a thumbs up. Thank you, Paul, and you, Beth. That resolution passes then. Moving on to our second resolution, set dates, reservation of public hearing on proposed amendment number seven, Mount Vernon Renewal Plan, city of Mount Vernon, state of Iowa. Anything to add?
Nothing in particular, so, uh, just for your reference, um, the, this whole process is for the police department building. We have actually amended the urban renewal plan, um, when we purchased the building, because we used tax income financing funds for that specific purpose. We also added some renovation, um, in that original amendment. However, with the expected cost to rise, um, we increased that amount. So, the grand total that we're stating that we could spend on this facility is like 1.35 million dollars. Now, we've already spent half a million dollars purchasing it. I don't necessarily believe that we'll spend all of that money in the renovations, but I am rather reading on the safe side. This also does give the ability, even though there isn't a particular intention to use TIP to repay any portion of that debt, it would give the council the ability to do such if they needed to, uh, in the future, so. Um, all in all, we'll have a consultation meeting with Lynn County and the municipal district. Really, those can get attended, so, um, the, I'm not, like I said, pretty cut and dry.
Questions, Chris, about this update?
So, Chris, what you're asking for here, separate date for consultation and then for public hearing?
So, if you just adopt a resolution, all of the dates that are needed are within the resolution itself.
Okay, see, yeah.
So, there'll be a consultation, there'll be a public hearing, and then there's time for a reverse referendum and all of that nature, so, um, it's all within the resolution itself.
Okay.
No further questions? Four is not willing to accept a motion, it's, I'm sorry, motion seconded.
Oh, there it is, correct. Um, I approve approval of Resolution six dash twenty dash twenty-two B. Set in dates, consultation, public hearing, and proposed amendment number seven, Auburn Urban Renewal Plan, city of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
I will second.
Thank you, Scott and Stephanie. If we are ready for a roll call vote.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman? Yeah? Thank you. Rose?
Yes.
Turner? Thank you. Ingo?
Yes.
Thank you both. These are our resolutions, um, no mayor, our operations, our own business, going to motion for approval, consideration claims list. We've got an amended copy of this after we've resolved. Any questions, staff?
I move to approve the claims list.
Thank you, Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Proven second, second to approve the claims list as presented. Ready to vote, all favor motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And two, discussion consideration setting alternate date of July, instead of July fourth, our next council meeting. This case council action generally we have been taking, moving to the Wednesday after, Monday holiday, should be the sixth. What is the will of board on this and staff, I guess?
So, uh, yeah, I sent the email out just to get everybody's opinion. Um, I did receive an email back from Deh today that said she would prefer Tuesday, but, uh, everybody else was okay with Wednesday. So, the only challenge we have with this one is, um, all of the set public hearing dates that you have on the agenda tonight, we had to put in ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so our preferences to go on Wednesday, otherwise we'll have to redo those, uh, notices. It's not a huge deal, uh, we can move them, but we just chose the Wednesday because of what we've done the last couple, um, changes, so.
Do we have the option to adjust the meeting time? The reason I ask is that is, that's the night that they're doing the community stories at the first street community center.
Mm-hmm.
And I would really love to be there, if there's a way, I don't know if it could start.
So, you're already changing the date, if you want to change the time, I can put it up to you. We don't do this, like.
I mean, I could start as early as five o'clock, but I don't know if that works or any of you guys. So, I mean, it's an odd time, but.
I'm okay with five.
How are those two?
Yeah.
That's shaking, yes, that's good.
The community stories thing starts at six. I mean, I get there late, I get there late, not a huge deal, but I'd like to go.
The only thing I would say is.
Yeah, I, I probably that.
If you guys would prefer not to do that, so the only thing that I was just thinking of is the public hearing notices have six thirty, listen.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal.
I'm pretty sure.
We can.
I mean, yeah, I was gonna say Tuesday work, but that doesn't work for you.
We can go on Tuesday, Wednesday, we can change the date of time, like I said, all we have to do is, we won't hold those public hearings that evening if we do something other than what we put in the paper.
Well, is.
We can possibly get that changed, Deh, till tomorrow at eleven, if we need to change those dates and times. That's what we're discussing.
Yeah.
So.
We're just used to having them in by Friday, so.
Yeah, no, I have the ability to make those type of, this is one of those types of corrections I can make up until about that timeframe, so.
Was, was Deh saying they can make it on Wednesday, or I would prefer not to have it on Wednesday?
I believe she stated that she would, um, she could be available, but it would be via Zoom, but it would only be for a brief period of time, which she was, because she has a ID map that, and she's hosting.
Gotcha, okay. I mean, I, I'm okay with that on Tuesday or Wednesday, I don't want to.
And Paul says he cannot commit to starting that early, and Deh is a family reunion, starting at six.
Okay. So, if we change it to Tuesday, what do you want, no? Well, six one, I know, it's just, let's just leave it on Wednesday then, because then we've got the public hearings that we don't have to run.
But we'll change the time, change our, is that your point, or no?
I mean, I don't care what we're doing.
We could make it, we could make it six if it doesn't work.
So, the public hearing is gonna be at six thirty still?
I, it's, we can make anything. Well, now, the five, five would have been probably pushing it, because you would have to elongate the meeting, but.
Yeah.
Paul can't commit to five, can he commit to five thirty or, or at six?
He says have someone shoot video from the storytelling.
What's that dog up to?
Have someone shoot video from the storytelling.
I hear what you're saying, but sometimes it's nice for us to be able to attend those things. I find it tough, just, I find calling notices thirty, I just wanted to make that.
It's on the table, Wednesday's. So, I would move to approve the change to our July fourth meeting to July sixth. Wednesday, July sixth, that's our regular start time of six thirty.
Second.
Here, Wednesday, July sixth at six thirty. Any other change about that time? We're ready to vote on, uh, whether to alter the date and put the same time for our normal July fourth meeting. Ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
So, this next item, then, date three through six, does that just follow this?
So, yeah, these are just setting public hearing dates for that date, so, so each one will need a individual motion, but I don't have anything specific for them.
First public hearing date is the, um, I am on some addition to city of Mount Vernon, council action as needed, um, doing it at our next meeting, basically.
I'm.
Second?
Move seconded, all favor, setting that, all reading date for July sixth at six thirty. All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And four, public hearing date for the preliminary collab, LRD third edition, city of Mount Vernon.
I will move for that date to be July sixth as well.
Thank you, Steph, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. We're all still good on that. All favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next discussion consideration setting public hearing date for preliminary collab for the Armstrong acre, part two, city of Mount Vernon.
I move to approve that meeting date for preliminary collab, Armstrong acre.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig and Steph. I think no questions about that, ready to vote on that, on the Armstrong acre, public hearing date, all of that, favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Discussion with consideration of public hearing date for rezoning request on the Armstrong acre, part two, from Ag, suburban residential.
I just want to ask real quickly, it's kosher to have both of those for the Armstrong thing all in one shot, basically?
Uh, so, yes.
Okay.
They don't necessarily have to run concurrently, but, um, in order for them to do what they would like to do, they have to do both.
I just, having both, you know, with the public hearing and the time is all involved. Um, all right, considering that, approve of setting the public hearing date for the rezoning request for Armstrong acre, part two, from Ag to suburban residential, for our next scheduled, uh, meeting.
I will second.
Thank you, Scott, Steph. Ready to vote on that, hearing date, rezoning request, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is your bound toward master agreements to the next two points. First one is with. Please.
So, the council approved at their last meeting the tenet of agreements, uh, which were, the tenet agreements are basically a synopsis of the language changes that were proposed. This is the entire contract. The only thing that changed, obviously, were dates and then, um, the items within the tenet agreements of longevity, the step program under wages, and how they pay for those fees. So, all other language stayed the same.
For number seven, J seven, all language stayed the same, and for J eight, both?
Uh, yes, so.
Not the right order, I just wanted to ask that directly.
So, J eight, um, had the new step program longevity, and then a clarification on one number that was wrong.
I move to approve, uh, discussion with consideration of master agreement for law enforcement unit, show force teams, three, some helpers, local union, number two thirty-eight.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll second.
Sorry, Scott. Any further questions, Chris, or staff on this? Otherwise, we're ready to vote. All give that motion, accept the law enforcement unit contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much on that one, I do a lot of work into that ahead of time, on everybody's part. Glad to have this type of, uh, agreement settled and proposed for, for some time, set for some time, I should say. Debate is the same, had the thing with, uh, NARA, law enforcement.
And noting Craig's question for an award, I would, I mean, I'll just further discussion. Move approval of, uh, master agreement for public services unit, with show force teams, three, some helpers, local union, number two thirty-eight.
I will second.
And Steph. Are there any questions to be asked? Otherwise, we're ready to approve that master agreement for public service unit. All favor, please, files, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, as I said, for law enforcement side, getting those done and negotiated. And with that, the relationships all around the table afterwards. Engageable letter with Alors Cootie, bond counsel, and I. Matter of engaging them for the.
Yeah, so, um, typically with Alors Cootie being our bond counsel, uh, if, most of our work with them is a situational base, so, um, they're working on the, the amendment number seven for us. Typically around between a thousand and three thousand dollars, just depending on the amount of work that has to be done, so. This will be the first set of fees, they also do a little bit with our borrowing, so when they actually go to borrow the funds, uh, they'll be long as well, but, uh, yeah. They've been very efficient, and the prices have stayed relatively the same.
And just for clarification, we, open because it's online, because we just, uh, secured the services of Lynch Dallas, these folks is special, specialize in.
Correct.
This sort of stuff, whereas Lynch Dallas is.
Yeah, so, Lynch Dallas, overall, um, Alors Cootie, although they do other municipal services, are highly kind of focused on bonding and then TIP and then some other items. They're one of two, both located in Illinois, both firms are located in Illinois, but, um, most cities will use Alors for that particular.
And Alors still back with the wall for.
I have not seen her for a while, but I can't honestly say that she's not.
Can I engage a letter with Alors Cootie, on the morning of our council? Ready to more questions, staff? Otherwise, are we ready to move forward on this engagement letter?
I move approval of the engagement letter with Alors Cootie attorneys for urban renewal, uh, amendment number seven, that's reasonable.
Thank you, Scott.
Sorry.
Thank you, Craig. Ready to vote on that motion, all in favor of the motion for Alors Cootie, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Think of the most recent agenda that I got, announced to the boards, is that correct? And we saw, this is a police report, I've already heard pre-advertised, the storytelling that Chief Shannon is going to be doing on July sixth.
Yes. And that'll be a short, five-minute window for me, so.
Call funding went well?
Call funding went well, we, um, are still calculating numbers, but, um, I know we're pretty similar to what we've done previously from there, and we were able to finally get the title, and we sold the Tahoe through gut deals for sixty-five hundred dollars, so. It was good to see that drive down the road.
Good deal.
Um, the, I just was, I'm curious, I see Monster received a second layer of certification.
So, he'll get, um, when he goes down to Chariton with, with the original owner, he gets two certifications from there, which is typical for law enforcement dogs. They'll have dual-layer certification, so they've got two different trainers certifying that the dogs performing what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, for credibility purposes.
So, checks and balances, basically.
This is the one he just obtained from Independence is actually a third layer.
Okay.
Um, we sent, we've been, last year and this year, we've sent him up to, the conference has been in Independence, Iowa, for the last two years, DLE conference, uh, trainers out of Texas that do a lot of national training, um, go up there, there were fifty-three dogs there this year, um, for a week-long conference, so he's networking and training with other dogs and learning from them, um, and passed his, uh, third layer of certification on that one, so, did very good.
Thank you.
I know, I was wondering if he has a mentor dog, or.
You're all miles.
I guess it's a slop.
Um, any other questions, Chief Shannon, on the police report? We're moving to call it birds, uh, graduation process and staff on tree removal on highway one seventeen. Well, seven minutes, seven minutes.
Yeah, there was, I was impressed.
That's, uh, impacting, dropping very low.
I think we had, uh, two satellites on the detour around a couple blocks, but it's not to the most part of the park, it was, uh, a little impact.
That sounds good. Did you ever get a, a raise over the school on, um, machine we bought compared to paint fields? They were impressed when they saw you use it, I don't know, did we ever do an agreement with them? Or is that being negotiated, or are they gonna use it?
I don't know if we did reach an agreement, I know we talked about it.
They don't have a formal agreement with it, um, they're not going to operate it likely, they're going to, we'll program, have a program, and then our guys will set it up. The fact that it basically doesn't, the painting itself, it doesn't take much, but they're very interested in, in us using it, um, I think they're still feeling out a little bit as far as facilities they're going to be using, all the other, and their construction, things of that nature, but, yeah, there is genuine interest, we met with, um, Matt Haiti, and had a pretty lengthy discussion, but at this time, I, I think what will end up happening is, is we'll just establish, like, how early you rate, when they're going to use it, or how long it takes, and then we'll kind of go from there, so. Probably something will be informal, but.
Good. Sounds good. And first of all, I have that law enforcement report, it's always the quote at the end that I don't have to ask. It's signed, look good, every person, every situation, will always like Brian Tracy. Thank you, Al, and I don't, neither like that.
I did have one quick question here. Um, Hilltop Park is mentioned, and I'm unfamiliar with which park that is.
Well, it was originally referred to as the Pocket Park, but.
Oh, okay, gotcha, so that's, okay, all right.
But there is a sign here, and obviously it's Hilltop.
Okay, excellent, and I don't feel nearly as. It's shared that more, you should know. Okay, thank you very much.
It's called works, I think we received today, from Matt, a partial record for it. Need to add to that, the pool's open and, uh, haven't had rain yet. Not to what, yeah. Assuming your numbers are good there, what would they be adding?
Um, I have two, I have one comment and then one question, uh, on this. I appreciated the numbers on memberships from that legacy, especially the June twenty-one, because that seven eighty doesn't mean. It just doesn't mean anything, right, so having something to respect, so thank you very much. Um, and then, and as far as the pool, there's the meeting on the twenty-seventh at Davis, and I believe that starts at four.
It does.
Um, is that over the public, what's, how does that, what, what's that?
Yeah, so, probably there's no start or stop process to that, it just show up as you are, uh, the contractor, who just basically have a discussion, uh, they'll have some phone boards up, showing some ideas, some concepts, uh, getting an idea of what people like, what they don't like, just, just a general, overall conversation about the pool itself. So, they're trying to get as many people as they can, it was in a short window, and it felt, starting at four, we captured some of the open swimmers that are still there, and then also the lap swimmers. We had to capture all of our clientele, open swim, uh, swim lessons, lap swim, and then open swim again later.
Matt, can you talk about survey a little bit?
Yeah, so there is a link out for a survey for the pool, to, uh, for the general public to share their thoughts. There's a series of questions, I can't remember the total number of questions on it, but it's a really good question, where anywhere from many's to, uh, be usable, often be usable, um, just conversation pieces that the, um, third party needs to get for some data, and they, uh, have over three hundred fifty of those turned in so far, within a week of time span, so, uh, we still have about three more weeks that we're collecting data for that, so there's plenty of time to fill that survey out, or we'll love it if we hit the five hundred mark, it'll be off sound.
Yeah, it took us a very, it was a very long rhythm, and it's a very quick one, it's a tape.
Yeah, it doesn't take a long time to.
No, it was five minutes.
Yeah, it's hitting on a lot of main points of it, so there'll be another public hearing, or, excuse me, another public input meeting, uh, that'll be offered in, after the season is over, uh, and reflect that on the season itself, and then, uh, also, we'll have lots of different questions, I assume. And our committee meeting met on Thursday, the ninth, and that was a, a really good meeting, where we just basically laid out the foundation of what the, uh, what Waters Edge is trying to accomplish. And they laid out the schedule, and committee members were thrilled with that, and many committee members. And they laid out a schedule, and committee members were thrilled with that, and the committee members got their opportunity to give their feedback at that point, too, so it's a really open process, which I really enjoyed, and Lauren that we have, from Waters Edge running it, is extremely intelligent on how to do these, and he's done a great job so far.
Matt, can you tell where the link is located again? The survey link, where is that found?
Uh, yeah, so that's going to be on, I know it's on Facebook, um that's the only place I'm aware of that it's on, because our city website is not on there yet, too. So that's been, uh, communicated around, shared, but right now it's on the Facebook page of the Mount Leonard Swimming Pool.
Thank you.
And if Nate could help us out, could he help us out? Thank you, so.
Any else, public works, record?
Mayor's report, I just convention that I'm going to join the mayor's, my group, mayor's group for the state. City's got pretty much interest in participating and engaging there, and also going to attend the biggest city's convention, I think it's at Great Terminology in September in Auburn, um, for a few days, but that's the one that was last year, what, in Corvallis, that we received a warrant, so that was a pretty big deal. Um, that's all I have, or officially, but, um, the administrative work. Any other council, committee reports, we have already caught, Greg, did you get your question answered about the next meeting of, uh?
No.
Did I get an answer?
The next meeting, uh, for the website development
Right.
contract, I think Paula volunteered to be on that, we sent some information to Laura, um, regarding our availability, so I have not heard back from Laura yet. And just because I said to Laura that I was available a week ago on those days, I didn't fill up. Couldn't help without you, I had to wait my haircut or something. No, anything, you can do that, I agree.
I think we're just seeing manager's report, need to add to?
Nothing too much to add, um so the togers will be supposed to start being delivered this week. And again, just a reminder that it will not say Republic on it, it might be, it'll say Ecall.
Well, the truck.
The truck, yes, the togers themselves will will all, you won't be able to listen to them look exactly like they are at Ecall. Um, the individuals that are delivering the togers are a subcontractor of Republic, so, um, it won't be a Republic truck that actually stops in your house. It likely will be placed in driveways or on the right away in front of your house, they're not going to push it back to the house, so you will have to kind of pay attention, um, to when they're going to be delivered. It starts July one, um, and as of right now, uh the city is, is planning to reimburse Gary's for any unused monetarily unused tags, that there are homeowners that happen to have unused tags, and it could just probably get a credit
So it's just remember it's in the city hall?
Very much city hall, and then we'll probably have something that you can fill out, you can turn it in, and then we
So when's the last deliver, or pickup from Kirk?
So that would be what?
It would be, yeah, so they will actually start the weekend July fourth.
So this is this week and next week?
Chris, Deb's got a question about, um, what about people that are not home?
They're all serial members, so they shouldn't disappear, um shouldn't. But they can call city hall, let us know, and we just make sure that they're not necessarily sitting on the street or anything like that, but
Maybe we can get the word out to neighbors to walk in.
That would be the, the most beneficial.
And maybe if you're going to argue on this, to maybe say, if neighbors notice, that, I think it's a good idea, I mean?
Yeah, so they're, they're always attached to the individual, I don't know if you get it, so, um not going to say it won't happen, it just shouldn't jerk, happens when it happens.
Chris, what did you tell us happens with the existing loom bins and people want to get rid of them?
So the existing loom bins, if you do not want to keep them, can actually go in the new recycling containers?
Okay, that's right.
They can be recycled.
Okay.
Garbage cans, garbage cans cannot be recycled, but if you can put them in your garbage bins as well, they can go in with others, too.
And for folks that didn't respond to the questionnaire regarding size of tote and schedule?
They, yes, so they
They defaulted.
They defaulted to the sixty-five and sixty-five. We're asking them to make contact relatively quickly, first month if there is an issue. The only thing that I will say to that is the, those that are asking to go to the smaller containers, there's a limited amount of them, so uh, it could be a scenario where they might have to wait, um, two to three months in order to get the smaller containers, because they're special, I don't know how many extras they have for
I assume that's outlined in the paperwork that's kind of looking?
The, the brochure, as far as, that will be a local program, they need to make contact with city hall if there's a change out request that they would like to make. Um, and I think we've kind of talked about giving them the first few months to make that change, and not the city would then sort of repeat if there were one of Republic, but after that two months is done, then they're, they're out, and subject to that basically, it's a delivery fee from the people.
So Chris, with what looks like the first week being the week of the Fourth of July, what does that mean for the pickup days?
So Monday is not one of their pickup days, I believe it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. So their, their calendar will have all of the holidays listed on it, and
Okay.
the last I looked at the brochure, there wasn't a holiday that affected our routes, because again, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
And do we have quadrants, or at least will be on that information?
Um, so the, the northwest and the southwest quadrants are separated in their own days, and the eastern quadrants are all together on Monday. The only one I can tell you, I'm pretty sure the northwest quadrant is Friday, because that's my quadrant, and I can probably remember seeing that, so, um but, yeah, so holidays, because they typically fall on those days, looking at the calendar.
Parks are around, parks are always
Couple of points from the chat room, Laura advised that they're waiting to hear back from the website vendors, um, to let you know, so she'll, she'll reach out as soon as she hears back from them. And then Deb is asking how about trash for the businesses, is that settled, and can all of this info be put on the city website?
Yes, as soon as we get the final brochure, we will have that on the city website. Commercial, um businesses are getting the same containers, uh, that they currently have, unless Republic have reached out with a different suggestion. They already started or had planned on moving some of those in this week as well. The only thing I think that might be a slightly contentious point is I haven't quite figured out why, there's nothing that I can find in the code that allows this, but they did allow commercial businesses to opt out of garbage, and I just don't know how that's used. So there, there are a few businesses that have opted out, opted out of garbage, um, in the past, that may not be able to opt out under their current system, so I'll, we'll actually see how that kind of goes. More to come on that one, it was just kind of an issue that we brought forward in the last week and a half.
Just a little sort of, you've got glass and ripple?
So, uh, made contact with Lincoln, Lincoln County Seagrass and Solid Waste today, uh, and the reason I'm not getting any answers is because the representative for this territory under Ripple had left. So Joe Berini, um, was able to get me a new email, and I sent an email today, and email call, and send an email as well on their behalf. So I hope to hear something from Ripple within the next week or so. At least we know why I was getting the answer.
What's, good.
Um, as far as yard waste within Bryant Road facility, are there hours when that is open, or is it kind of a whenever the gates open, or how?
Uh, since we've got the cameras out there, we've left those gates open all the time, so weekends, nights, what have you, we've had a few incidents since more people have been done than they should be, but other than that, yeah, the gates are open all the time.
I, I would put a plug out there and a reminder that contractors are not allowed to dump out there. When they are contracted by individuals, they wrap that into their fees, we know they wrap it into their fees. They're not to dump out there, so those, we've had a couple individuals do that, and then we've had a couple individuals stick close to a few other things, um, in what they've done, so. Nice part is we have a camera, and we also have a, uh, license plate camera as well. I think, as, as a reminder, if that happens, you will have the option to come pick it up, or you will have the option to pay the bill, or
And, and what I, I guess what our policy is, and what we're leaning towards is, I shouldn't that site should not accept anything that wouldn't normally pick up on a brush, or
Yeah.
and it's posted out there, nothing bigger than eight inches of vein anywhere, um, you know, no logs. No, it says no dirt, the yard waste is one thing, and, you know, tree debris is another, you know, brushing the branches, twigs, stuff like that, so I don't know how many, I don't know how many more things I can post out there, because I'm confusing everybody, but, um, but
It doesn't have to have pictures?
Yes.
That was a little, Matt was considerate right there, actually. Well, I've, I've, I've had, um, both myself and parents and a couple of folks I've talked to, um use the facility now and drop stuff off, but also pick up a whole shed, um, have been quite pleased across the board with the availability and just the ability there, so.
Well, I know, there's, we've had kind of a struggle trying to keep up with like refilling the bunkers, because a lot of times, I tell them all the time, guys, we got to take this thing on Monday, because the weekend, nobody's smoking, that material we've used up a lot, so, um, but, yeah, it's, we might have to make a Monday figure.
Good problem to have, I said. Recycle clean and be flexible over the next few weeks.
Yeah.
For all of that, sorry. One final thing I was going to mention, uh, to the hat here, to, I think I got a quest from a person from Iowa City, representing to Mayor of Auburn, about, uh the location of a house in a picture that they had from their grandmother's estate that they were cleaning out, and, uh, it was they had like a century ago, and, uh, I passed that on to Historic Preservation, so that asset was not in the house, and so she passed it on to Mary Evans. Mary Evans visited the site with a family name, went back to the city directory, it's nineteen twenty-five, twenty-two, and it's a three-year-old. A process of elimination was able to locate some properties, then took, figured out third one, took the picture, sent it to the party, and, uh the party in Iowa City was very thankful and sent me an email today about, uh, first of all, the fact that from the question being asked, getting it answered was that a week, and going through, later to fire deed, so on, and, uh, but that is all responsive, that are made as of the response, so Mary Evans of Historic Preservation, if you ever see her, um, say thanks there. Need to find another member or two, if I remember perfectly, don't we?
They are very pleased about the space that we made, and to leave all the, the new digs, and she's up there at least, once or twice a month.
Hopefully there won't be any more, like, say, there's a base, right?
No, so the, uh, all of the bikes are below where we got them now, and they have plenty of space, so.
Ironically, a bit of a sidebar, but my father gave me a postcard this last week, that my mom had, that when we looked at the stamp, it was about nineteen twelve, and it happened to have both a house I lived in and the house I currently live in, and I'll see both, or so. But I'm not in her.
Any else wants to come before this council meeting, otherwise then we are adjourned, if you're watching. Thank you, guys, up there to